25 live. Beep 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 beep. Reporting for the most anticipated town hall meeting ever. Uh, what is up everybody? Uh, I know I put 6:15, I put 6:30, so I was mixed up. I mixed, you know, the mayor, he did that and then, you know, Willis, which is me. Yeah, um, that's where, you know, yeah. Okay, so I'm up, you guys can hear me? Patty, look, look, you guys, you're gonna see, you're gonna see Aunt Patty later. What's up Wes? You guys see Aunt Patty later? Yeah, I wanna, I wanna get this started because of the fact of I got to go inside and I'll actually leave you guys with Aunt Patty. Uh, when I gotta go set the speakers up. Ah, so, how's everybody doing? Look, I need to shave, I fi- I finally got my truck back. Loving it.
What did they have to fix on it?
Well, right now, those stuff I could've fixed myself for a lot cheaper, but I had to have them look at the AC.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, uh, it's gonna cost me a little bit more money to do the AC, so I have to wait and save up on that.
What, do you need compressor?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, compressor, yeah, it's like, like 1,100 bucks.
A little more money than your compressor.
Yeah, so, so what's up everybody? 300 people in the chat, appreciate you jumping on. We are here at the town hall meeting. Ms. Belinda is just now getting here. Like I said, I, um, I gotta get in there and set the, uh, speakers and stuff up. And that way, everybody can try to hear. You guys wanna know who's here? Bam! Christine Ramen noodles, Aunt Patty. Check 'em out. You guys are gonna see them in the video.
How you doing?
Me and Christine had a good round at Tube Town today.
That's right.
Had a good round with Grandma Gail. Had a good time at our Tube Town today, didn't we?
Hey, I was Tube Town reborn, baby.
So, yeah, so, and you're gonna see, you're gonna see Aunt Patty, she actually, she went through the Tube Town tunnel. She actually literally went through it.
Was a little worried about parts of me getting through it, but...
But she made it.
I did make it.
You were brave.
I was brave, I ain't afraid.
So, how exciting is it, again, ladies, what do you think about the fact of now, the town and the, the, the festival coming and so far, all these people? My support system has already raised up all three food trucks, if we go that route, whatever way the city decides to go, 32 vending booths.
That's amazing!
So, so the, the town of Otter Creek's turning around.
If you plan it, they will come.
That's right, and look, there, there's Ms. Otter Creek right there. There she is. I gotta, I'll go in there and, uh, set this stuff up in a minute. And then, um, we wanna get that done. But what is up everybody? What we got? 728 people, wow. Don't forget to hit the thumbs up, and if you don't like me, don't hit the thumbs up, cuz you don't like me. That's okay, but you're watching me. But yeah, we had some good fun today at Tube Town. You gotta get a couple videos, the mayor. Uh, if you saw Tube Town today, I, I started cleaning up. I got some permission to clean up some of the old buildings around there, which I'm pretty excited about. You guys are, um, it's our real treat. You, you saw Tube Town today where I kinda got started. You should see it now, it looks good. And I'm sweating, it's hot. Hope the AC's on in there.
We got Jessica, Diana.
Yep.
Jessica's sister Jenny.
Well, you got Debbie Farmer over there.
Debbie Farmer.
Debbie Farmer's here. They, well, yeah, we had, there was just, they're all in town. And, uh, where you guys, well, we're not gonna tell you where we're at. They're all, they're all basically on a little girls retreat, having a good time, then they came over to help out at Schoolhouse and then, uh, they're putting in some sweaty hours there today. Had just good fun, so they got, they got some good fun at...
No, we're kidding.
Yep, there, there it is.
Uh, you know, it's opposite.
We like, I like you too, somebody said. We love you, I love you. Yep. Yeah, so pretty much all my, my entire, my entire moderating team is here. But we're not worried about it, cuz let the haters hate, cuz haters gonna hate and lovers gonna love.
How many mods?
There's Ms. Belinda. Alright, so let me get inside and go set this, uh, sound system up. I might, I might hand you guys off. Well, there's my alarm, I gotta dismiss it.
How many mods you have?
Uh, I just have a few. Uh, we don't, luckily, we got a lot of decent people. And, um, so therefore, and I'm not gonna show Mr. Belinda, she sees this too soon. Ms. Belinda, I'll set that sound up whenever. I haven't been over to the chat, I want to chat with everybody else. Um, what's up, good deal? So, yep, so I'll get the box, and then when we get out, I'll get the box, and then, um... Actually, we're gonna set the speakers now. Mowing meditations with Willis. Actually, I'm turning this up.
Now, what do you think? Now, let me introduce, this is Town Hall. Let's try back into the 40s. We had depot and stores and... This is the first one that I've ever seen.
So much I'm proud of.
Grapes were for oranges. I thought they were, they were cedar. I was told that they were made in Cedar and they were orange grapes because they passed the bugs from getting in.
Cypress, so we're beneath the rehab. Cypress boxes. This is my...
This is a place we can go with it. I'm gonna go. It's so great. Oh, just give me a reason to go somewhere, I'm there. I was trying to, I was trying to... I just wanna, wanna sit on every day, every ball, they have this wonderful fest- festival. Let me take, I mean, I gave you so much trouble, but I'm not, I'm definitely playing. But I'm really...
There's a lot of good stuff there.
Should we put this right here, so everybody can hear us then? Here's when the karaoke order begins?
It's not Otter Creek, yeah, yeah, I'm not.
Welcome to the Arctic Town meeting, we're just participating in the whole town. I'd like to welcome each other again today. Excellent. But while we just pour the water to the fine people here, just so everybody knows, we're about to do here.
Now, I first, I'm pretty tired. Oh my god. Is this, that's...
That, do you want now? No, actually, Zim said that is across the road.
It looks just like it.
Yeah, I know, but he said no, so I'm thinking, okay.
Can you hear me?
We're, we're hoping that somebody can give us a little bit more...
So, I, I was told that we must back for like, is two months ago. Maybe then, or you're down in the same, like here or...
Can't hear, can't hear. I'm not sure why.
What are you doing, just start recording parts?
What about this one? Is this one better? This one's better? This would be one, this would be one. This would be two, this would be two. Oh, there's Jeremy. Jeremy sees his baby ba- Jeremy sees his baby, baby, baby. There she is. So, um, which is gonna be better? This one, or they both better? Is there a difference? Two, two. Two. Two, everybody says two. Now, now, should I leave two on the table, cuz that's where Zim's gonna be at, okay? Just so everybody knows, we'll leave two on the table. Because that's where Zim's, how's this one work? How's the number one work? Remember, I'm not gonna be talking during the live. How's number one? Say one for yes. Allison says it's the same. Both are good. Alright, so, that's where it's gonna be. That's where it's gonna be. So, we'll leave the good one on the table, just so everybody knows. And then, um, yeah, so, both are fine, everybody's saying. Okay, we can't be too picky. So... I did, yeah, so, everybody out there, before we start the meeting, these are what Ms. Belinda's been getting ready for the festival. She's been, that, she's been actually doing a lot of, uh, research and getting a lot of cool pictures together, gonna make some cool displays here in town hall. And so, these are some of the pictures from Otter Creek. Way back when. These are like... The town meeting hasn't started yet, it's still early. Check this out. That's Otter Creek when the railroad was there. Look at that, Otter Creek. We're bringing it back. Yep. The head mic is on, the head mic is on. What if I put it there? Everybody refresh too. Look at this. So, people ask why we taught at Railroad Festival, cuz they're bringing back the history of what used to be here. So, those are cool. Sure, this, this is the old woodmill. The big ol' choo-choo chain. You people, you can't hear me, I'll tell you what. Turn your, turn your thing up. The dental office. Did you guys see Tube Town today? I actually got permission to start cleaning up the old post office. And, um, you will see it, well, you'll see the start of it, cuz I kinda let you guys on a little cliffhanger. Not really a cliffhanger, but just a thing. Check this one out. Look at that. That's back, that's why, that's why it's called the Railroad Festival. That's why it's called the Railroad Festival. Alright, the mayor just showed up. We can hear you clearly, good, alright, perfect. Check this out. Look at that, imagine, when they built that back then, how do you build that back then, right? It was Levy County School Bus. That's cool. Check this one out. The man who keeps the city pretty just walked in the door behind me. I think that's the, uh, that's the store. Otter Creek School. So, yeah, you guys will see, I'll be, um, getting these hung up here in town hall. Now, this is the old train depot. Now, everybody keep in mind, I'm going to be, Jeremy, he wants to see his baby, baby, baby. There she is. But, but now, I'll be cleaning up over there, the actual train depot has been moved, it's in Cedar Key now. But we will be cleaning up over where the train depot used to be. So, those are really cool. Those are awesome, I'm glad we got to share them with the world. So, Ms. Belinda is going to be working on a nice display here at town hall. And so, when you guys come to Otter Creek, you'll get to see it. Anyway, I'm gonna get seated there soon. Always, you know me. Act like I got a microphone. Alright, oh, we got brochures? So, look at this. Hold on, Jeremy wants to see his baby. Oh, cool. That's awesome. Yeah, I wasn't in there today. Alright. So, everybody, you'll be turned around soon. There, there we are. We are here. For like days, I mean, I, I get here days early. Exactly. That's what we do it. Hey, Aunt Patty, can you do your turtle expression? So, all the girls, just so everybody knows, all the girls are in town, they're having like a, a ladies retreat, and so that's why they're all here, that's why, and they decided to come and, uh, support the, the Railroad Festival and the things we have to tell the town and, and see what else is gonna happen, so it's gonna be exciting. We got 2600 people in this. Wow. Pretty soon, you guys, 20, I think that's the most, oh, no, that one lied, see, remember, there's really no drum. I tell you, boy, it's been hot out. So, yeah, look, oh, you watch this, so I've noticed this, look, George, if I spin this around, it's wide angle, right? If I take it back, and then I, look Patty, and then I go back, it's close angle, do you guys see that? Do you guys see that, how it's close angle? And then, wide angle. Aunt Patty, you know, on the most professional, unprofessional, look, she's not even paying attention, YouTuber. So, did you notice that, George, watch? So, if I spin it around, it's like close angle, right? And I spin it back, and I spin it back, it's a wide angle. See, you're seeing all the table there, but if you spin it and you spin it back, it, it zooms in. Watch. See that? Isn't that weird? So, anyway. I don't know, I'm gonna, look, so I just make sure I just gotta get a wide angle when they start, so... Alright, the chat's been flying, you guys, I noticed the super chats coming in, we appreciate it. Uh, Jeremy's been requesting to see his baby, baby, baby. And so, um, what's up, Jeremy? Hey, baby. Hey, baby. I don't know, I know Debbie, Debbie needs a bra, hey Deb? Deb, Deb, did you get your bra? Did you get your bra yet? Your bra, remember you needed a bra? She says no. No. Ah, and Ms. Patty was making it too. Up, up, up. Vice Mayor Carl just came in. Everybody say what's up to Vice Mayor Carl? Can you guys just feel the good energy that's here right now? I mean, it's just, this is a different town. It's awesome, look, almost 3,000 people in here to watch the not-so-much drama, but the cool festival in the making. Well, Jeremy says he needs his baby, baby, baby. So, Jeremy, don't tell everybody. I am.
That's my favorite channel.
Ooh, did you hear that? Did you hear that? Alright, that's the wide angle. So, yeah, the mayor of Tube Town is not here. He's at Tube Town right now. The real mayor of Otter Creek is here. Aren't you guys excited when we get to tell him? All three booths, 32 booths and, uh, and I just can't discuss it tonight. 50, it's gonna be, it's gonna be 50 booths max, is what I think would be, you know, recommended, I mean, obviously, it's gonna go through the city, but we have... Well, there's not, well, I'm... It's gonna be a split tent. That way, it's gonna be what you're doing with us to decide, and then if you wanna meet the mayor, I just walk around the back, around the banners, and then I, and then you meet the mayor. That's not a bad idea. Hey, you know what, I picked up a payphone the other day at Walgreens to see if it'd actually work? And it didn't work. No. I, I wish it was gonna work, but...
Like, whenever I see old telephone in a booth, I can't help myself either.
But if you, you gotta see if it has a dial tone. Yeah. Put this on this side, okay? Look at Ms. Belinda. That's why it's town, look, she's getting it done. That's, that's a close angle. And that's the wide, that's you get the wide angle, so, everybody...
Are you over there?
There, here we are, there's head of security.
They, they wanna see themselves, there you go, that's what y'all look like. Just so you can see.
Now, you know.
Looks different for Travis.
Knowing this half the battle.
Well, hang on. Oh, there he is! He's the mascot.
He is. Yeah, so definitely wide angle. Alright, so George, you're gonna sign off, we're gonna spin it around, cuz it don't, don't start soon? I don't know what time it is.
You ever watch those magic shows where they'll do a 360 and all of a sudden they're wearing their own...
That's what I need to do for two...
You're gonna have to practice, you have plenty of time to practice.
I could do that.
You need to start practicing like a stat.
My, my head, my brain's gone already, brain's already... So, don't forget, after the meeting, you guys are gonna be watching Tube Town because, uh, Tube Town got to do some stuff in this town, just starting to bring it back to life. Just started today cleaning the church, or excuse me, the post office. And, uh, man, it's gonna come out good, so, get excited for that, pretty excited and, and looking forward to this meeting, so... I'll say Jeremy wants to know, will there be a kissing booth so the haters can pay the, pay to kiss the asshole? Alright. There should be a dunk, there should be a dunking booth. I saw, I mean, it's probably, I can't, nah, nah, I'll do, you know what I'll do, I'll do a pie, pie in the face. Pie in the face, yeah. And then, um, I think somebody should do a dunking booth, I think it'd be good for them, they can make a lot of money. But there's only 50 spots available? Well, that's what, I hope, I hope we get them all 50 filled. But, uh, what do we got? Is that clock? What's, what time you got? Oh, we got 15 more minutes. That was unplanned. Dunk taint for, yeah, well, you know what, hey? There's people out here.
Hey, everyone.
That's fine.
Yeah, there will be. Absolutely.
Jeremy. Alright, now, sweet. Again, it's gonna get quiet. Nope, it's not gonna get quiet. Philly's here. Yeah, we got, so we did get the sound set up, hopefully it'll be better this time for like projecting. I actually set the microphone right in front of Zim this time instead of... He got it, he got a chuckle out of it. He got a chuckle out. See, he got a chuckle out of it. He's like, I don't wanna be like him, yeah. That's funny. That's funny. Look at Aunt Patty, she's a star. She's right in the middle.
She's a born again.
Yep, that's right. You guys had to watch Tube Town, no, that won't be in Tube Town's video today. But Patty actually was born at the Tube Town through the tube. At the same time Christine Ramen Noodle made a ringer. So, it's gonna be good. Uh, yeah, the meeting's not going on right now, so if you're trying to pay attention to it, it's not happening right now. It's got like 15 more minutes, I think, 14 more minutes. So, that's it, yeah, well, we fixed all that, we tried to fix that, we got the microphones on the table, I got them all. If you were on here earlier, I got the sound system set up, we got all the mics up, and we hope that, uh, everybody can hear. That is, that is the goal, cuz you know what the goal is after that? To talk about the good news. Oh, I guess I gotta fill that out. She's just gonna sit there, she's gonna be our entertainer in the background. But yeah, don't worry, when the meeting starts, you guys will get turned around and get to watch the meeting. And I'll shut up.
So, y'all feeling alright, everybody?
Yes, sir.
How are you?
Yeah.
How are you?
I'm feeling a lot better, hello. It's, um, everything has gotten better with me, I'm back at work.
Yeah, back at work? Nice.
Let's start back home, I'd say I'm 90%.
That's good. I'm glad to know you're back at work.
You guys are wondering, Vice Mayor Carl? A bunch, all of them, right? The whole, the whole team. The whole baseball team. Alright. So, again, this is a close-up view. We will, um... She doesn't have to. Stop hitting on me, Jessica.
I will be at the festival signing autographs and I will be wearing my Otter Freak softball jersey.
Ah. Man, so you heard, you heard it first, right here, Jessica, Jessica's gonna be there. She'll be there signing, he said the whole Otter Freaks baseball team will be there.
Well, I'll be there.
So, they're all gonna be there.
We're the Schoolhouse Girls, hashtag baby.
That's it, that's it. Yeah, I, I had been, I slowed the chat, but I spent so hard to rewind or like watch the chat. I do apologize. Turn the mic around. No, you just need to turn your volume up. Oh, what? So, yep, Jessica will be there, just so you know. One is good, well, if you just don't, you better refresh. Oh, I gotta put this on this side. Are you single, Aunt Patty? We're gonna get, are you single? She says, like she ain't even saying nothing. She's single, ready to mingle. Oh, man. Volume is loud and clear, yeah, the volume is good, it's gonna be some of the people, some of the people out there is gonna have a few issues with it, so, um... Well, um, so I'll call you afterwards and tell you what I heard, what, uh, somebody who was visiting Tube Town told me. Jeremy? I'll tell you. I'd text you right now, but I can't. Okay, Aunt Patty, can you read it, it's going...
What's that?
Can you read the chat, it's kinda hard.
A little bit, you know, I'm partly hearing, and I can't hear, I can't see in one ear and I'm deaf out of one eye.
Man, you're a catch. You're a catch. Geez, if I tell you what, when she's around, it's so, it's like, the, the good vibrations are just like, they radiate, like I've been telling everybody, you know what I mean, like, that's what this town needs, we need positivity, we need people that are, um, you know, here to do things, and right now, we've gotten half of the festival raised for already with just you guys in this chamber. Just this chamber alone, well, this in Tube Town. I wonder if, um, I'm telling you, I think somebody. So, I can't rewind so much, it's hard. Wes is in the chat, everybody. Say hello to Wes. We got. Hold on, oh, not smacked, there's a. The minutes are ticking down to the most anticipated meeting of Otter Creek. What's gonna happen? Curious minds wants to know. Uh, right on, that's my goal. Change the world one smile at a time. That's the whole idea behind my channel. Even my haters that are smiling because I read their comment, they're smiling, so like, win again. Watching from the UK, worldwide. Yep. No mask man. No mask man.
But I, I do like to see where people are watching from.
Alright, wait, okay, everybody, tap in where you're at. Tap in where you're at. Let me know. Chief Lynn. Well, it's gonna be the world, Colorado, Tennessee, um, Arkansas, Wisconsin, whoa, UK, Iowa. I got it on slow mo too. I got like 15 second slow mo right now. So it's definitely slow. And don't forget, everybody refresh. So. Refresh. Don't worry, it's starting soon. Ohio, Spain, I guess it's people in Spain. And UK, this is New Zealand. Alaska. Well, that's alright, well, that's, oh, I, don't just hear me suck on it, man. I don't wanna do that. I got, actually, I got some breath mint. No, I need a counting. Maybe else want a breath mint? Pass them down.
No, I'm good, thanks, folks.
I'm not referring, I'm not, I'm the one who has a bad breath, probably, but. I'm just suffering. We are getting closer. Again, I haven't been, it's hard to read the chat, everybody. Yep, almost 4,000 people. Alright. The Otter Freaks baseball team all got their dose of icebreakers. This is not an endorsement. No, the mayor's not here. Has to be Willis. He speaks to the, speaks to the people. Willis has to speak to them. So, that's, that's the deal. You're good. No, you're fine.
There's Don. The only person who are waiting for us to come in is, uh.
Coke? Okay. Ireland? The most anticipated meeting of all time. George, it's the most anticipated Otter Creek meeting of all time. Are you excited? We will see. We will see. You will see here in just a moment. Okay, eat these. Pepper mint gets in my throat.
The spearmint?
Yeah.
It's hard. I usually get the pepper mint. Like cinnamon does that and spearmint does that.
Oh yeah, people are cursing in the chat. Chop them. Yeah. So there's gonna be people out there that are gonna be saying trolls. We're gonna X them. But be respectful, we don't care. So. Get back to, alright, I'm outta here, y'all. We'll see you after the meeting. Gotcha. Um, slow the chat. I did, I slowed like 15 seconds. Uh, yep, looks like we're one commissioner short right now. I think they still have a corn, whatever they call it, I don't know. Alright, so. Coming back to me, baby. So we're gonna wait. So when we do go back, we'll do like a double switch, so you guys can get like the wide angle. So. Again, everybody, if you're in the chat, it's hard to read it, you know, so it's hard to see anything's being going on. But, um, yeah. We'll be starting soon. George, is, is you alright with the peppermint? The spearmint? Better now?
Yeah.
I'm challenging. If you, if you get one stuck in there, it's like.
Now I know I don't buy it.
Yeah, exactly. Well. I just.
I was just reminded why I don't buy spearmint.
Watch, oh, so you guys have four more minutes. He's got four more minutes. So. Yeah, obviously there's this kids out there saying that, which, all kinds of kids that are like, uh, rude. It's part of being a kid, I guess. Just getting quiet, getting quiet. You guys still here? I'm not sure. Uh, good question, Jeremy. Good question. I'm sorry, I decided to laugh at that one, dude. That was funny. Yep, so there it is. There's the Otter Freaks baseball team. Christina Ramenoodles, there's, um, Fliffin, there's Christina, oh, I can't see the things away. Then you got Debbie, then you got Jessica's sister, I can't really see that well, then you got Jessica, then you got that old grumpy man back there in the back, that grumpy guy. Nah, he's a cool guy. Yeah, he's cool. He's fun. There's actually, there's all, there's all kinds of good, goodness around there. Again, once, uh. And once we get to let them know that more than half the festival's already, the funds have been raised, and where they wanna go from there, like, that's why it's exciting. That's why it's exciting. Sweet, Crystal got a smile. That's the goal. Any of you out there that don't know my channel, don't watch it, it's just about trying to change the world one smile at a time. It's got two channels, this and Tube Town, baby. So, you better follow both, right, George? No mask, no. It should. Don't see why it wouldn't. I don't see why it wouldn't. That's the sister's out of town. Yep. So. Again, I don't, I don't know. Almost, yep. Almost 5K. Yep. Tell you, we're making baby a natural phenomenon. Yep, we're getting close. How many minutes? Just a few minutes, one minute. That's right. One minute. Alright, so. Getting spun around. Okay, there it is. Back. We're back. Yeah, I know. I hit the little speaker thing. Oh, no! We're back. I think I know it. Tell me when it's back.
The United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's actually illegal, I believe. It had, being masked in a, in an official building, is it illegal or no? I don't know, I thought that's right.
Government building.
Looks kinda goofy, doesn't it?
Can't technically mask yourself in public, huh?
Yeah, you can now because of.
Ooh, we gotta debate before the meeting starts.
Medical masks are the exemption, like a bandana or something like that.
Great sound. Yeah, if, if you're behind, I can turn the sound off next time.
Which is like, like a gator or something like that.
Alright, um, I think we're with the lead. Alright, this is the Zoom meeting. Alright, uh, let's go with the agenda. We got a vote approved, the agenda.
Second.
Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Uh, first with the minutes for, uh, Zoom 18th meeting. Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, um. Special guests is Paul Jones, which can't make it tonight. They're gonna be here next month instead. Uh, but they're, they have filed our findings with the state and it's all been satisfactory.
Yes, I went in and, and did our part and for the first time ever at the day, we had a hot off with the state and everything's been accepted, no errors.
Nice. Good job, Miss Melinda.
Let's go back to the roll call. We got everyone.
Laura Ma.
Carl Hughes.
Zen Pajit, Melinda, and Megan. Okay, and Joseph said he got some family issues, one of them, I think he was submitted to one. Okay, thank you. Alright, old business. Talk about the festival regarding to the res, uh, the resolution. Um, do we have any here for the resolution? I would just like for Celeste to read it tonight.
Sure.
And see, and read it, and that way we can all relearn or we can just make adjustments. Cause I've. Yeah, there's not a lot of parking, really, it isn't. So any facility within the city, I think we ought to at least list that as a free parking. Uh, you have the manuscripts out here, maybe even open park up right here for, if you're not that far away, um, for parking for free, anything related to the city.
Do we still have to get access from over here on the third roof?
Yes, we do.
That might be considered people.
Right, and that will be straight back in and out to the main drag too, on that. You know, follow that. And someone brought up about individuals having family over a guest that was parking in the yard. Um, I would say that they put a sign where it says free parking, that it will be exempt from any permit that would be required. If you're doing, that charge fees and you gotta get a permit. That's how we should do that.
I don't want anybody in my yard.
I guess, that's everyone's right, for sure.
But we do need to look into blocking off like, um. Mr. Conian, or Ms. Conian, Mr. Rainey's property.
Okay.
Because Rainey's out of town, we don't know when he'll be back.
I'll let people on the march on his property.
So a couple of stakes across the front with a flag and tape?
Tape, definitely. And high enough that people maybe won't ride everywhere.
Right. Okay. We might want to print out some big signs that says paper on paper, just new parking, the state took a couple of sticks, or stakes or something.
And probably the property next to it.
Whoever wishes, I mean, it's, uh. I, I don't want towns committees to be able to run a flag if it's property off.
No, for the houses that are empty. Goes to across from me.
Right.
On that road goes to you.
Okay. They, there is a problem. You want flag off the property, blocking the open park, I think that should be missed at all. I just don't want towns committees to be able to do so for everyone. Cause if we do it for one, we have to be allowed to do it for everyone. But we'll be glad to assist anyone who wants assistance, or needs it. We've had, Travis here has worked his tail off and given us a lot of information, a lot of stuff going on for the fe- festival. He's got us a nice source of vendor lists to go through. Um, I'll ask first, if we have time to get a copy of that and look through it and then reach out to some of these vendors that are as councilors and just see if we can let them know about the festival. Uh, I believe, you wanna talk about three minutes?
Yeah, absolutely, whenever. That was good. So, yeah, um, I've actually been able to raise enough money to pay for 30, so far, 32 booths and three food vendors, whichever direction the city decides to go. And, uh, my idea with, with me and, and myself, what I wanna do is to be able to try and raise enough money to where we pay for, my opinion with the street size and everything, no more than 50 vendors. The list I provided you guys has more than 70, I think, on it. And I have another list that I'll be bringing as well. Another suggestion, maybe handpick, because there's only gonna be 50 spots as to what we reach out to first to see who would wanna commit. But, um, but I think that, you know, moving forward to city kinda healing and becoming a little bit more of a community, I think this festival's really gonna do a lot of good. And I, I hope to be able to bring that to you all with, uh, just my experience from, you know, doing events all over the world. And, uh, I think that, uh, that you're on the right, you're in the right direction. I think the world, really, the planet actually supports you all, really. Obviously, I'm not gonna beat a dead bush. Everybody knows this all over YouTube. But, uh, the planet is really behind this town. And, and moving forward, I've gotten some volunteers that are interested. Something I, I wanna suggest to the committee is, um, like, we offer overnight, if they wanna set up the night prior, but we have people in place that would be overnight eyes, you know, maybe two people doing two shifts, four hour shifts to where we'll have somebody watching up and down the street, cause the street would be closed off. But that way, we can offer the vendors that, to where it would take off a little bit of the the stress at the beginning of the event on 8 o'clock, before 8 o'clock that morning. Cause if everybody comes at that time, it might be a little bit more hectic to get everybody out there by 8. But if we allow them to come in ahead of time, let them know, hey, it's gonna be secure overnight, we have people watching, I think that's gonna relieve a lot of the morning stress that will come with an event. And, uh, and ultimately, like I said, the first time event, I would love to be able to help the town of Otter Creek, be able to say, hey, listen, you guys don't have to pay nothing. You guys come here, celebrate our city, celebrate this, and make some money. And, um, and some other thoughts, ideas I had was this will be all you guys to discuss, but maybe some of the town people get involved in a sense, like, ma- maybe Miss Melinda have a lemonade stand. She sells lemonade. Carl, maybe you do sweet tea, you know, you sell sweet tea. You know, you maybe do, um, shaved ice or something. And the, you know, it's, whatever, whatever case it be, everybody kinda collaborate. And then, and then the community residents can actually benefit from this. So not only the vendors are coming for free, they're making money. Now, if a community resident wants to be involved, again, this is all through the city and through legal, then they can, you know, be involved and they can help generate revenue for themselves out of the festival. And that's like a win-win in my eyes, like, hands down.
Thank you.
Oh yeah.
There's a card up here if you wanna fill it out. And then, while we get to the public comment section, you fill it out and put it in this box, then we'll pull the cards out. You'll have three minutes to speed. And we'll have a timer. You know how long it should go, cause that's the objective topic this is. But yeah, you just take that, fill the card out and. But you can just take that, fill the card out, and put it in.
I have reached out about getting an ambulance here, whether it's for hats and, you know, a little booth for them, or having it on standby. I think the hats booth thing will be more off the vision for the town. But I have not gotten a call back yet.
No.
Either reaching out, that even to somebody.
The chief from fire department said they're looking on the seven truck up, which, you know, these, these type of things definitely be right on the ends of entrance, so if they're ready, say, you can get right out. And we're not saying that absolutely these people can't leave before this time, or they can't come in after this time, but they have to be escorted by somebody with some flags, go walk in, get down the street with them, and get them to their location, or get them out of their location. You know, just for the late drivers or something, just to be there. And the eight o'clock thing is really kinda early to cut off the street with traffic.
I think so.
When most of the foot traffic's not gonna get here until ten o'clock. So probably nine would probably be better for that, because vendors a little bit more cushion time on that one, as, as a thought. On there, and then the four o'clock thing is, I think we're gonna stick with the four o'clock thing, just if someone has to leave, you know, they gotta get escorted, figure it out, you know, if somebody's walking around. We don't, if someone's having an emergency and can't deal with it, themselves. So. We're gonna do, do nine, um, four o'clock stays, food stuff stays, vendor stuff stays. Yes, yes.
The one question I had in drafting this, there was reference to the fact that the food trucks would pay seventy-five dollars and something about ten percent of receipts, and that's part that wasn't clear to me, and so I'm like, damn.
Yeah, it would just be a, it would be a honor system kind of thing, they say they sold a thousand dollars of stuff, they just pay a hundred dollars, ten percent of the collections. We're not gonna give a camp with money, and we just want people to hear what they're saying, and honor.
Okay.
And, and that might change, it's according to, um, cause it sounds like there might be some leeway in this, cause if Travis raises funds, basically Travis is paying these, paying these fees, basically Travis is the vendor, so therefore, he kinda gets to make his own rules of how he's doing that on himself. But, but we have to have it. So that was a question that I was coming to my mind, I'm assuming this is a good question about it. If it turned into what you just described, if we don't get the food vendors, and we say the council members picked up a food booth, each of that type, and just finally purchased some of the foods that they sell, then of course, you know, that food, that money would be donated through his stuff. And also, now, now we would be having a whole booth, doing the food stuff, and it would be our participation, and then we would turn in our funds, or at least cover our costs, and then turn in our balance to you.
So it sounds like you wanna add a section about at least the potential for town councils slash others to operate food on a donated basis, not what you just described.
Yeah, that way it's, um, cause, you know, food vendors, first time event, when you're getting a lot of negative feedback, or not negative, but hesitant.
It's a risk.
And so we, if we get, say, if we get a thousand people come through here, they're gonna want something to eat, something to drink, and they're gonna, and we don't wanna, we don't wanna spend a lot of money on buying foods, preparing for it, and then it not sell, and then now we're out of pocket ourselves. You know, which is just the same, same thing the vendors are saying. That's what I was thinking, when he, if he raises the funds, you know, we can kind of assess the value of it, and you apply that to some of that food purchasing, and then we can cover what we need to cover for ourselves. And then at the end of the day, we sort out ours and don't have rest.
Yeah, it'd totally be up to you guys, whatever you guys decide, however, whatever direction you guys wanted to go with it. I just wanna, you know, that's why I bring it to you guys to decide and do y'all's thing.
I think it'd be good for us to get to interacting with everybody from town coming through. So, I'd like to have that loophole in there so that we don't violate our own resolution. Okay, alright. We got vendor street traffic, let's talk about that. The check-in thing still started at six a.m. I was sure there's somebody would be there at five o'clock to start, and I know I don't open at that time every day. So it'll be easy to get that arranged, obviously Friday we're gonna be out marking the street, and laying out all the squats and all the cubicle areas. Oh, one other thing we didn't talk about was the, there's twelve hundred something feet of street, and we divide that up. We originally said ten by twenty spaces would do a hundred lots, but these vendors are coming, they're gonna replace the park, and there appears a long ways apart, and you can track it over there. But if we have them a spot, a parked vehicle right next to the tent, and they're all on the same street with their vehicle.
Knocked down to fifty.
Knocked it down to fifty, that's the number that we're gonna assess it at.
Yeah.
And that makes our goal a little easier to max out.
It's gonna make it more appealing, honestly, for the vendors, when they come here, you know, and someone might have no problem with it, and say, hey, if you mind parking out here away from us, fine, but some of them, you know, it's a first-time festival, we want them to come back next year, so therefore, if they had to walk and get their, they forgot something of a display or something, had to go all the way to parking it back, and then, if we're busy, we can't direct them, you know what I mean, it's like, they have it all right there, if it gets hot out, they crank up their car, get in the A.C., and then they're gonna wanna come back next year, they had everything kinda just like, I don't wanna say, just like, on a platter, like, man, you come here for free, you get set up, you can park right by your booth, which most, most festivals, you can't do that, you have to, you have to park and you have to go separate. But for the first-time festival, it's gonna make it more appealing for the vendors, and then next year, you, you know, you scale it as it grows.
Makes it appealing this year, we may not have to do it next year, but it would be, it'd give everyone a chance to see the capabilities for next year. So we'd be, we could be a little bit more stricter, a little, um, guidelines, standards are what we need to do to meet it. We'd like first to see the warranty is successful, and go, you know, anything that makes it easy to do, that, right now, we're reaching out to some of the farmers, some of the local businesses, and trying to, you know, attract the companies to come get a booth, and park their tractors, and someone sit there, and give up a lot of water or something, and just whatever they wanna do. Alright, so, um, here we are.
I know we wanna do it on the street, but what if, could we fit more, if we get it back in the park? Maybe something along here in front of here, so, you know, we could incorporate, not as a little road, but the town hall and the old, you can't literally block it right there.
You wouldn't get as many vendors in this spot, in here at all.
You'd back off the road too far.
You'd be blocking a lot more driveways, that way you'd be limiting a lot of people to their houses.
They would block off this street here, well, you wouldn't really block the streets if you did anything, but that would definitely find it down to half the vendors at least, if not, if less than that.
I think the-
And then this, this is a good location, if it works, and then next year, we said, alright, we wanna, we wanna figure out a way to do the whole street next year, you know, and then, that way we got, we got some experience behind us, you know, when we start putting this out there for next year. Next year, we may decide, we wanna let someone organization run the thing, let's just let them handle it, and then just enjoy it, like the other towns do. But the truth of the matter is, this town needs the income from it, and it's, so it's, I'm looking forward to that, it's just a, 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 a good time for everyone in town, a good experience, and a town benefits fund. So that's, that's, that's awesome.
Honestly, that location is, is great, to be honest with you, because if you think about all the traffic that goes down, was it nineteen right there? And if they drive by, and they've been driving for a while, they're gonna stretch the legs, and obviously the festival's gonna come up to the end there, and they see all the booths and everything set up, like, oh, we're gonna turn it, we'll go back, see what that is, you know what I mean, cause, you know, they can actually see it, you know, driving by.
And that street's also fairly shaded too, you know, so it's nice for that benefits too. Alright, um, anybody who looked at this, seen anything you can talk about, or modified? We have to have a reading of this, I would say, next month, so if you wanna do anything else, I'm just gonna do this. I'll play it down. I think that covers our technical stuff we were worried about, modifying. The time thing, there's a little bit more needed time. On the mail strip thing, I'm gonna- Alright, anybody out there have anything you've been on this?
Um, I just have one thing that I maybe look into, and that's if you're talking about people having different food, checking with B V P R to make sure, since it's less than thirty days, that it's gonna be there, you may still need a temporary license to sell food.
That's on, that's on my list of-
So to check that, to verify.
There is a rule out here, I think the town, you know, Bronson and others, when they have their festivals, they waive all of that, especially the city event.
Well, I, I do know that if it's, if it's put on by, say, the Lions Club, or one of the Vex, or something like that, then it would fall under them. But if it's the city, it's a, it's just a very, you know, kinda gray area, so I would check into it before anything, just to verify that the people, any nonprofit, it would fall under nonprofit and that kind of thing, so just because, I just don't want anything to happen ahead of time, just check into it, make sure you don't, and it's just a temporary license if you do, so.
That's a good thing to follow up with, for sure, to check on. Alright, okay, anybody give it up? At this training, coming August first, it's in Cross City, for all of us, and, um-
Everybody's registered.
I'm already getting off work, so.
And those are really beneficial, they got a lot of information, they really, they really give a lot of information to us. Alright, Melinda, you, you got your, we'll let him, so we can get that in, I'll let you get to that fourth. Okay, we have, um, we'll talk about the safety deposit box here, while we're, if he's trying to locate this whole thing. Oh, here he is. Quit this thing, it'll take me twenty minutes to find that. Alright, we, we got a very small video here, it's just a few minutes long, we're gonna play this tonight, and the reason we're playing this, is because this next step that we're fixing to take place on, is, um, this is showing you what our justification is, and why we made our reasoning the way we did on taking this path, and this is the evidence that we will produce, at any dispute, and spot against us. Everyone, please be very quiet, no talking or questions during the video, we will not replay it, but we'll be glad to clarify anything, take a couple of minutes to clarify at the end.
We, we intentionally, we don't have a plan with that, so we should get it part.
What you're attempting to do here is immoral, it's illegal, and it's criminal, you know it. Completely ignore the charter, uh, and I'm not gonna be a part of this, at least you're saying, you know what I'm saying?
And leave your phone, because I just saw the screen, you're recording and you're removing a public recording from a public venue.
You know, you're illegal. You can't control me, look at this, happens every time, we haven't had one for five months, it's all on you, so, it's, it's criminal what you're doing here. And I visioned it tonight.
Are you waiting?
Yeah.
Are you putting it on? He's three wheels off, he don't get to her.
Okay, just to be clarified, this is, take a moment here, talk less for a moment. At the beginning of this, when Don first spoke about it, Megan explained to him that this was, we have to sign in council members, that we had no core, we didn't have the members. Do you even have a meeting, so we had to swear in the members to do so, Don infused it, and he said he had wanted nothing to do with this, absolutely. And I took that as in, he was drawn from his thing, and we voted on this, and it passed, and accepted that. I just wanna make sure we had that clarified before we set this seat, okay? Alright, so we got, um-
By failing to install the duly elected person, councilman for that seat, so it's wrong, you know it's wrong. Your attorney told you it was wrong, everybody knows it's wrong.
Please have a seat.
That's who you are, and you're wrong, and you know it.
Please have a seat. Okay, choose a candidate for the vacant seat, we have the letters of interest that came in.
Anti-democratic, what you're doing right here. A duly elected councilman.
We'll just have the one.
We have, we only have one interest that came in for the seat.
Who's been elected?
And that was Rex Woods, he is the new owner of the marketing park over here, Shady Oaks, is that correct? I was making sure I said it correct. Okay, so there's only one candidate for, candidate for the seats, so I don't know if anybody can take a vote, but I'm guessing-
I'll make a motion.
I think you should.
Have you looked here for six months?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so there's two. So there's, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, three, hands. Rex, if you would, please go up here and have a seat, and we'll get you some. You gotta, you gotta, I did answer a ten forty one, it's not a fault. So we wanna do the swearing in him before we get to the next step?
We're gonna state your name. I'm Resilience. This only swear, or affirm that I will uphold and defend, affirm that I will uphold and defend, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Florida, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the laws of the State of Florida, and the ordinances of the Town of Otter Creek, so help me God, and the ordinance of the Town of Otter Creek, so help me God.
Alright, we've got, um, we are safety deposit box to keep, it's been stuck in a file box in here, you can tell it's been stuck in lots of places, the original ordinance from the town. And it's pretty wet, but we have seeked out found sources for a safety deposit box, and we are, we are required to keep this thing in safe, in a safe place outside of, of, just in a filing cabinet here. So a safety deposit box was, we selected, was that with C P S or capital C?
Capital C.
Capital C, okay, and you wanna talk about that, the fees and the difference?
The, the box, the safety deposit boxes, for all of our original ordinances and resolutions, they, the original, have got to be off-site. Because those are our laws, our, our house bill, that the legislation- Because those are our laws, our, our house bill that the legislation gave us, Otter Creek. The original one is in a file in there, that is not supposed to have it. If a buyer hurricane come, we're supposed to have these off-site. So therefore, instead of having a safe, trying to figure out who, where it is, we just, it's been, it's cheaper to pay seventy-five dollars a year to have a ten-by-ten box. It's thirty inches in length, and you put all kinds of things in there, but it's, it's off-site.
Seventy-five dollars a year?
A year, that's what I said. I had really, are you sure this is, I said, not a, no, an annual fee of seventy-five dollars.
That's, that's cheaper than a box.
There'll be three, three of us only, I went ahead and listed, say, people that are on our checking account. And then that's to change if whoever wants. I put since Carl, Zim, and I are on the checking accounts, because that's what the resolution said. I went ahead and did this for the safety deposit box. If that is okay with you, I'm going to just form around, and have you guys sign at the bottom. And it just states that just because we need to have this happen, and I'll sign. I signed it with the mental, the signs. And so if everybody agrees, you'll sign the bottom for me, and then.
Okay, we got, it's got the listed, the signs? Okay, we can get a motion for this?
I'll make a motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
First?
I want a pin.
I gave you that part, you could answer a pin.
That's nice.
It does. It's handmade, the guy makes all the wood and cuts it all down and does his stuff that he's, he's a relative of ours, and he's just, he makes his bed ready for Christmas.
That is amazing.
Yeah, I thought it was, it's like, you know.
Is it blue?
It's black.
Oh, Miss Belinda, you're not blue.
I don't have blue. I'm sure you probably get the, the blue thing. Okay, so that's satisfied for now? All right, so we have, we got the department stuff to talk about, we got administration, Belinda, you got something you want to talk about?
Okay, well, as I told everybody about the yearly audit that already been done, been submitted for a time ever, on time, well, before time, too. So that would have been nice.
So let's all give you a pat on the back. Absolutely.
Next item is, by the end of the month, we will go live with our new software program. So between now and the next fifteen days, you'll get a letter, and I'll give you instructions on how to go online, set up your account. So you can pay the bill, see your history, all of them. The, right now, you can go on the website, I'm in the, I have all the resolutions scanned, all the ordinances scanned, all the minutes, the packet, the agendas. They're ready, we're working on uploading them now, so they'll be finished, we're going to put some other little bulletin board in there so that we can give you guys information on hurricane prep. And we actually have a, I think we have this own weather station, that's what the little part is for. So I want to give you guys that link that says here, for Otter Creek, and so we're, hopefully, if everything, that's a lot, we're finished by the end of the month as well. So right now, we're moving forward.
You're moving forward, Miss Belinda, kudos to you.
We've got a lot of pictures of the old, I've passed some around. If anyone can come up with any more, I would love to have some. Something you guys saw, some of the, the bigger one that I did.
Get some of these pictures of the town from its original times and put them inside here.
We have a, this is, believe it or not, this is Otter Creek in the nineteen forty's. So we actually had a downtown Otter Creek, we had Murphy's House and Depot and Dennis Office, and so we want to get started on putting them up on the walls. We have some other ones that we're working on. Though you can't get them too large, because then they get real rainy and you lose the picture. So if you have anyone, knows of anyone that has any older ones, would love to get ahold of us, I'd like to copy. I don't want me the originals. And not only that, but then we're going to set up a bulletin board for our festival, so as well. But, you know, we want to get started on the, on the, put our history up.
That's right.
I did want to add that Belinda is using her own money to, to, to pay for all of these enlargements. This picture alone was thirty-five dollars. I have started a collection envelope in her office, if people would like to add to that envelope. So she can make some more enlargements. They can also send envelopes of money to the town hall.
You don't have to.
No, you don't have to, but you certainly can.
So as far as my department goes, that's where we stand, we updated.
He brought us into the twenty-first century.
Inquiries for public information also, is what they're already? So that eliminates requests, and just go right straight to the file for, and get pulled themselves. Belinda has done an excellent job, she works a lot, she has really extremely brought a chaotic mess of paperwork and trail of, of abuse and neglect of that office. I would say at least ten years, if not fifteen of it, and she has brought it back up and got it back into the lines. We're, we're all within the rules and regulations, and we are just typical, that you've decided to come help us do this. I'm so glad, when I first, when I first asked her, she was like, no, I don't want to get involved, I don't want to get involved. And then, then she saw the struggle that we're in, and she stepped forward, came in, and has really, has really just showed us how lame that I am, anyway. I believe in that.
I think it shows how much love she has for this town, this community in Otter Creek.
Office administration is a real skill.
What would you say, Miss Belinda? I work here.
Yeah, we all work here.
Okay, so thank you so much, Belinda, I just want to make sure, that you, you are very much appreciated. Okay, Public Safety, Laura, you got anything else that you want to talk about?
No, nothing.
For you, yes.
Maintenance, Richard, have you got anything we've got, that's at hand that needs to be dealt with?
No.
Okay. The water is, come along, our, both our water facility people are going on vacation. I believe they come back next week. So they, maybe by the end of the month, we might be able to have the filter systems online by the end of the month. And there'll be a tile test run, and it'll have to be turned on, shut back off, and have the approval by DDP and the water management people to go back to put it online permanently, and we have to run some tests and that kinds of stuff, and he'll be following that. Two or three days with the testing, to get them live. So I'm really excited that we may have this online by the first of the month. Yes, sir?
How long's it going to take to flush out everybody's volume?
There's a, there is, I think it's three days for the water to just in, in pipes. No, 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 I'm sorry, in the tank, there's three days for the water in the tank, and there's about a day for the water in the, in the water main itself. So if we get it online and don't let it supply for at least two days, that'll bring that reservoir way down. But the risk factor is, now we just blew away our comfort zone, if something clicks out or falters a little bit, somebody's lost two-day cushion for repair. So I'm thinking, instead of trying to rush the flush out, let's just let it take its time and keep our buffers on. Right now, we have three days, minimum.
We need a midway to more right now.
Yeah.
And once it's online, you can always open a couple of fire plugs and let some water out.
Which, that's a monthly thing, we flush every month, or every few months, we flush the fire, and so it's, on those, once we're online, everything's up and going and fully functioning, we have, we got confidence, we got it. So we still have the old system in place, but we can go right back to, all the switches has been done manually to switch from the system now to the new system. And then we'll have, we have to switch it back, change some valves, and we go right back to the old system. If we, if ever something does go wrong, and we'll keep, we're going to keep that cushion for at least six months to a year before we look at trying to take out any of the old, just to make sure that there is.
Need a secondary place.
Just something there. But everything we have is in duplicates, so, you know, there is multi-felt faults in the system now. And I didn't think, I should have brought some pictures, we're at, I'll get some pictures, so next month, we have everything, we'll be able to show everybody what the plant looks like inside, what it used to look like, what it looks like now, and why it's operating. Okay, anybody got anything else?
I had a question for Richard, because he mentioned the access from the, for the festival, that there's a path. Does that need to be cleared or maintained or anything? Can we, can I help you out with that or anything, if any of that needs to be done? Because I know it's probably not in your regular, you know?
The, the park right behind us, there's an access gate to the.
An access gate, is, is it not, needs to be cleared or anything, or is it? No, the gate's totally just. That's all I wanted to know, is if, if there was any debris or anything, that it needed to be cleaned up to be inside access?
All right, so we've got, there's that stuff, we've got announcements. Belinda, you can prepare these announcements.
On the children's table, I've listed the list of the days until we're here in, in July and August. It's also on the website, on the calendar. The Walker-Sassa meeting for the wastewater is scheduled for July, it's been canceled, and it's been rescheduled. So their next one is August twenty-first, remember, everybody, anybody, welcome to come and sit at this, listen to us, see what's going on. So it's usually one o'clock on the scheduled day, and I also put the new schedule up as well, not only in the agenda, but the schedule itself. And that would be one of those things that we're going to place on the bulletin board, so that, you know, but it is open to the public.
It's the third Wednesday of the month, at one o'clock.
Where is it going to be in August?
In August, it's going to be in Bronson. And there, the address is sixty, East Hathaway Avenue.
My question is for Laura, has anything been done yet about the, the dogs running around loose as far as the festival?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
When it comes to the animals, the only way county will even step in is if it becomes aggressive towards somebody.
Okay.
What we can do, we can send letters out to the homeowners, asking them to put them up.
At least for the day.
Yeah.
For the day, okay.
Okay, so.
Relates to my dogs for sure, the dogs that are outside.
I don't, I don't know who you are.
Heather, Heather, I, did I live on, on that first street right there, that I've been on for the past two years that I've been bending up? I'm pretty sure I'm the only one of the two dogs that moved on the street.
I'm more concerned about the dog on this.
Oh, okay.
There's, there's quite a few dogs that walk.
My dogs have been beat, my dog has been shot, I got a lawyer here, right in the back, somebody stood over top of him and shot him. So in that time, he was six months old. And they were, actually, my dogs just came back from playing in the water from my backyard, and I had to pull my dog out from my house that was, you know, he was shot.
Is he alive?
Yeah, he's alive, he's alive. But my dogs weren't like that until, number one, he was shot, and the female was beaten so bad that her head was so big, it hurt, her eyes were so closed. So, and there are about three, four people that walk by that my dogs do guard back, but they know the ones that are messed up and the ones that are.
The ones that, that the people, that they really don't care about, the people really shouldn't be running the street.
Absolutely.
No, it's, it's been about, it's been a couple of months now.
There's some new dogs in the.
Yes, there has been some, ever since the new, the new RV practice went up, I have maybe of, of the new people that's been coming in and that have been out all hours in the Michael Street, so. I mean, there is other concerns, I don't have seen the channels, I would never, I wanted to be more, but. Well, we let out our dogs.
They'll come at the participation portion, you can get back to that a bit. The, before we go from the meeting to the public participation, I would like to talk to the council about having a workshop once a month to bring our ordinances and our resolutions up to date. We have, we have lots of people requiring about permits and stuff, we're trying to get online with the safety bill. For them to come on with us, we have to get our ordinances brought up to date and get them lined up so we can have actual set rules to go by. There's been so many, there's been so many precedents, it's preset, that it kind of eliminates some of the, probably half of the stuff that's out there. So we need to at least bring it up to the date, so we've got whatever those things are and listen, so that way the rules are consistent for everyone, the same. And so I'm thinking the first Tuesday of the month would be the same time, would be, that way we're having it on the same cycle on Tuesdays, Tuesdays, Tuesdays.
That will work for me.
Okay, at seven o'clock Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month?
I can't promise I would be here, just because a lot of my surgeons' things are Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Well, we won't be, we, we won't be passing anything, as we just be ironing out, making sure we're dotting all our i's, getting it together, and we'll read it at the regularly, correct?
Yeah, those two weeks, though.
Right, the fine tune, you know, down so we can actually read the ordinances. Now, we, we've got a lot to do in this behalf, just to get this part, there's so many things, it's so out of date, and the ordinances that was, you know, I think it's been told me multiple many times that the ordinance this town has really wasn't written for this town. They were, they were taken and pulled from towns like Orlando and Tallahassee that had these things established, and, and they just pulled those and put these together and made these ordinances for our town. So it really wasn't suited to our town, so it's been, there's so many changes been modified over the years, the precedence that's been given to make it work what the town needs. And so we just need to bring them, bring them up to where they show that, so they are consistent, and there are something to stand behind. We've got to do it for code enforcement for billing and for, you know, code enforcement for the town as well. But we'll start with the billing department, because that's the most pressing thing we've got to get aligned for, is to get inspectors and units, or building officials to stand behind us on our stuff. So the first Tuesday every month, seven p.m., and then, of course, the regular Tuesday, two weeks following.
So starting August?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, is it meeting the workshop, will it be just us, or will it be publicly allowed?
Hope so, but they're not allowed to participate. This will be us in our conversations, we should get it out, now we can, I guess we can put out questions at the table, but, you know, but it wouldn't be, it won't be open.
Discussion.
Open discussion, and tell us what, it's going to be, discuss, we've obtained what we're trying to accomplish. All right, so that being said, we got that, we're set for that, and so we got the notice, it's two weeks notice for that, and then we'll, we'll put it out on the board, you know, a week ahead of time, for public notice. Public participation, we've got a few things up here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, gotcha. We have a guest here today, and she is, she completed a request from public question, but she is a guest of ours, she has come to our town, and she has helped us out many times in our needs, we felt, felt, didn't have clerk or didn't have situation. Uh, we felt, felt, didn't have clerk or didn't have situations in hands, she certainly has been a help to the town. Mandy Waters, do you like to speak to us?
Sure, yes, please. So, yes, my name is Mandy Waters, I'm here tonight as a candidate for Levee County Clerk of Court. Um, I first wanna say that the last meeting I was at here was like night and day compared to today, and I wanna commend all of you for getting this together and for what you're doing and all the old photos and, I, I just wanted to commend you for that, y'all come a long way. Quite rugged the last one I was at, I remember somebody at, I'm good. So, I've prepared a speech for y'all to keep, if I'm on timer, I wanna skim through this and stay on track instead of venturing off down the rabbit hole. So, again, my name is Mandy Waters, I'm a candidate for Levee County Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller. Um, I have worked at the courthouse for over 12 years, eight of those years I worked in the clerk of court's office and then I went on to work for the county judge and that's run right now. Little bit about me, I graduated Bronson High School 18 years ago. Um, I love to hunt and fish and, and do outdoors. I don't look like it right now, but I do, when I get home out of my crops on. Um, I am not only aware of the unique culture of Levee County, I'm a huge part of it, I'm very big in my community, I go to all the events, um, love supporting things, I love to see success and, um, just so many organizations out there that need donations and help, just a helping hand and encouragement. Uh, my husband is Mandy Waters, he works for Central Florida Electric in Cheekland, he's a lineman, he's been there for 16 years. Uh, we live in Cheekland, that's where our homestead is, um, him and I have been together for about 14 years now. We've been members of our church for about 10 years and I love it there, I've held many, many, many leadership roles there, I tend to start one thing and end up with many, many hats, and that's okay, um, I love it. So, I plan on dedicating the rest of my career to the Levee County Courthouse and the citizens of Levee County. I have a service heart, I always have, and it's trickled on up to polit, politics, I guess, so, a lot of people don't know what the clerk of court does, so they refer to the circuit court, they refer to the county court, and refer to the board of county commissioners. Um, a little bit about my career, my career started over 20 years ago in banking, and I hold over 23 cer, um, course certificate completions from my banking career that I'm very proud of. I did not realize how many I had until I started studying and preparing for this campaign and, and I was very proud of myself on that. Uh, I also hold many cer, uh, judicial certificates from, uh, attending clerk conferences and judicial conferences at the courthouse. Um, I worked for the Levee County Journal, Tri-County Advertiser for a short time, I was their advertising and county executive. That was a very big title for a 19-year-old, but I loved it, um, gave me a lot of experience. After that, just before working at the courthouse, I worked at Gensmore Healthcare Center, it's the largest one, at the time it was the largest nursing home that we had in Gainesville, and I was the admissions coordinator there, which was a department head. There was 12 department heads over, we all managed over 100 employees, so that's, I had a lot of management there. I was the acting business office manager, I did human resource work, again, I wore many hats, um, there as well. Um, I also was acting activities director. Um, and then after that, I went on to work for the clerk of court's office. There I held many, many titles again, um, going into the clerk's office, my, um, my dedication and ability and work ethic was quickly noticed. Um, so, Mr. Schiff had asked me if I was interested in running one day, and I said, yes, actually I am. Uh, my, my heart's in it, I'm passionate about it, and I absolutely love that job, I love every bit of it. So, I started moving around the office to learn everything because I thought that it was important to know what the frontline workers are doing before I take the job over. So, there I was felony clerk, county ordinance clerk, taxi clerk, value assessment clerk, and then I also learned recording, public records clerk, civil clerk, uh, I worked in the finance office at times, and I also learned the archive records, retention records, the evidence locker, which is quite interesting. Um, a lot of people don't know that the clerk of court holds the evidence.
The keys to being a clerk's.
Um, it's in, the, the judge puts in the evidence, the clerk has to hold that for so many years, depending on what type of case it is. Um, I also created several manuals at the clerk's office for the different positions that I held for the next person that took that job over. So, um, after that, I was offered a job by our county judge, it was Judge Brown at the time. He, his judicial assistant retired, so I prayed about it, I thought about it, I talked to Mr. Schiff about it, and we decided that what we were, was probably the best decision I've, I could make. Um, and in my current role, I manage 10 different court divisions, um, I read and interpret Florida statute all day, every day. Um, I am in professional design, uh, between all elected official offices, their, their employees, attorney offices, probation, name it, I, I communicate with a lot of people in the, in this county. Let's go to court hearings, monitor court, draft and file orders, which is the legal document. So, I've gained many, many resources throughout my 12 years and it is imperative to have a good working relationship with all the elected official offices and have resources to provide to the citizens. I'm a big advocate of that, I want people to leave my office feeling helped, not discouraged, um, and I want to provide resources to them. I don't wanna say, I'm sorry, I can't give you a legal advice, or I'm sorry, I can't help you, I want to guide them in however I can. However, you cannot give anybody legal advice or fill out a document for them. Um, so, in closing, I would like to leave you with this. For the past 12 years, I've served the citizens and officials of Levee County with diligence, honesty, and compassion. I've worked the front lines and greeted everyone at the county with a smile and anxious to help them, and still do. I've dreamed of holding this position for a very, very long time, I'm very passionate and valued, if you can't tell. I've sat many days in the courtroom, I understand the, what the judges need, um, to process your cases, shall you ever have, should you ever have one. Um, I've been watching the learning throughout the years, all the do's and the don'ts, I've learned a lot, um, very observant. To me, this is not just a professional goal to achieve, this is something that I've wanted to do for a long time, um, it's, it's not about the job title either. I truly want the job, I want to go in and do the work, and if my employees are out, I wanna be able to sit down and do what they can do. Um, I've always kept the color conform and I love to educate everybody, I think that's very important, to be transparent. I will use my attention to detail, organizational skills, vision, and experience to empower the Levee County Clerk of Court's Office if elected. Um, I'm young enough to give decades of dedication to Levee County, but mature enough to administer the duties of the job. I'm excited to enter this next chapter and I, um, I hope to be, I will be honored to be your next clerk in this county. I'm very passionate, again, I have a desire to serve you, the citizens, I'm here for you, this is an interview, you have to make the decision on who you think is the most experienced and qualified. I'm the only candidate in this race that has any hands-on experience at that courthouse, period. Um, clerk's office, eh, anywhere in the courthouse. Nothing against my companies, I, I think they're great people, but they have no experience. All the other elected officials, most of, yeah, all of the other elected officials that have experience in there are in that office before they took it, there's a reason for that. Um, I'll close by saying I kindly ask for your vote on August 20th, and if you have any questions, please give me a call anytime, or I'll stick around and, um, just answer any questions that you have. Thank you for letting me go past two minutes.
We have, our voting proceeding now is at here at the church, the Baptist Church, August 20th, and, uh, it'll also be there in the, there'll be two rounds.
Little educational purpose, I'm a big advocate for education, so, um, if you are not a Republican, I will not be on your ballot. You have until July 22nd to change your party to a Republican, to a Republican if you want a vote in this race. If you, um, if you're an independent or a Democrat, I will not be on your ballot. Should, should I win in August, you will see me on the ballot in November because there's been an, an increase in that, that just in November, and that's why there's only Republicans in August, only Republicans can vote in August for my race, only. And you can change it on, um, Tanning Jones's Supervisor of Elections website.
VoteLevee.gov.
VoteLevee.gov.
Yes.
VoteLevee.gov, you can change it there. Again, the deadline is quickly approaching. So, that's, that is your decision, if you wanna voice your case.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Hello?
I'll, I'll sit around.
You're, I'm good.
Alright, for the, uh, regular public comment, the way this works, we're gonna have timer set up here, three minutes, that's how much time you have to speak, try and direct to us, not amongst each other, if you will. The first one is, it looks like it says, "Tide," I'm sorry if I'm saying that incorrectly.
I just have one item of business here, just because Travis enlisted me. "I, Tye, a domino, do of my own free will donate my time and efforts to the town of Otter Creek before, during, and after the October festival as needed. I do so with no expectation of compensation or favor of any kind. I further release the town of Otter Creek from any unreasonable liability or responsibility for injury or damage to my person or property." I guess I can give that to you.
Sure.
This is the official person.
For cleanup and stuff like that, just, I'm.
Thank you so much.
In, in case there is a, a document that gets drafted up, that's interim, and I'm happy to sign any amendment you.
This is definitely a volunteer basis. Thank you so much.
Anything else, sir? Good?
No, that's it.
Next one is going to be Heather. Uh, you can, you can stand either, you don't have to come up here.
Uh, I'm Heather, I just wanted to know what, what this event for, like, what, what are the, where's the money gonna go to? Like, is it going towards the town? Is it, what, what's it, you know, what is it going for? Because, um, the people that live here, you know, I mean, I, I haven't been coming to the town meetings, I didn't know about any of this until today, um, I would like to know where the money's gonna be going to, or what, what we're, what we are trying to change in this town, what are we trying to fix, what are we trying to make better? That's it, that's, that's the only, that's the, that's what we're looking for.
I would like to give you a little bit of information of what we're working on. We have had, uh, our insurance has gone up almost $14,000 over last year, and, uh, so it's, we, our budget has increased about 20 grand this year versus last year, this coming year, and, um, we are trying to find sources for the town that have income outside of just taxes. We don't wanna have to raise everyone's taxes $20,000, uh, just to cover the cost of the town's basic minimum. If you look around this town, it is basic minimum, this town has no frills.
Yes, everybody that lives here is pretty much on a fixed income.
Yes.
I mean, there might be, maybe 10, 15 people who are, are younger, at least, that are not on a percent, but everybody that's lived here has lived here for so many years, they inherit things from their grandfather's, so.
So, the, um, the, all the funds, all the re, all the res, that's why the town is actually gonna coordinate this, or I mentioned that earlier, the town's doing the coordination, doing all the footwork, uh, when other towns turn it over to different clubs or members of the town, and they make the money off of it. But the town needs this income, so the town is doing it for our, our stuff, to benefit the budget, and, like we had said earlier, we gotta, we gotta cover all of our cross factors, that we're hoping that the town walks away with this with a pretty chunk of change out of this, to help us with our needs. And also, and it also will be, um, uh, public involvement, it's things this town, for people in this town to do, to get together, other than coming here and, uh, having to be exposed to fussing and arguing and carrying on.
So, one, I understand that, but, so like, where's, like, what is the money for? Who is it for here in this town? Like, what is it for taxes? So, as people that live here, we don't pay those taxes for our town that we live in?
That's not what I, I answered the question, I'll ask her again, okay?
Sorry.
Okay, I'll answer it again. The, the funds is to cover our budget, our upcoming budget, that's where this money's gonna go. It is going to be right with the general fund, and it'll have, uh, our, our taxes, our, our budget has increased right at $20,000 over last year's budget, and we're trying to recruit this money somewhere else other than just taxes. The taxes, you'll have to pay your taxes, you'll always have to pay your taxes, and taxes always go up, but you can't change that.
And taxes actually go to the county.
Right.
You know, the county gets maybe two to three percent of what is in the taxes.
Are these taxes going up because of our, because of the new, or because of the RV parks, or what? That's, I mean, what are the, 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 the theory, they go up?
Your gas costs more, your light bill costs more.
Yeah.
Everything the town does costs more than it used to cost, just like your household, you run it, every year it costs you more to run it this year than it did last year. That's the same for the town. And, um, we, we're, we are required to have certain things by the ordinance that we have that's not been, been met, and because the town doesn't have the funds to do it. So, we have to, that's another reason we're trying to bring the ordinances up to date, to what the town really is and what the town really needs, so it fits, so the town is in compliance with all the state rules and regulations, other than just on paper, you know, we're gonna do this, but over here, we don't have the money to do this, we can't do this. So, we've gotta bring these two together so that we can have something. And this is a public community involvement project, and I'm hoping that we do more of these, and, uh, we got the community center coming up, I hope we start doing a monthly event at the community center for the town. And this is stuff that, you know, we, uh, you get involved with the people in town, and that's what the purpose of this is, community involvement and helping with the budget.
So, what else is gonna be at this thing? Just third vendors?
Street vendors, just like the one that's, you know, key, go on.
The question is, what is there for kids to do?
There'll be games, there'll be games.
There'll be some things.
Bounce houses, the tree.
Yeah, there'll be some, there'll be some kids' activity stuff to do for kids.
It's been a morning, I mean, I'm bringing morning, if I'm gonna do something, I'm bringing my kids to it, I want them to have fun, too.
Well, this is a family event, it's, it's, it's all about.
Yeah, the, the more, and, and what your guys have, the more we, we're all new to this, so, you know, you and you. By mentioning that, I'll make a note and we'll start investigating what, what can we do for the kids.
One of the, one of the things I would like for the town to do, the city of Archer has, just the last couple of years, has put in a little splash pad over there, it's very, it was very inexpensive, it was low-profile, it was, I mean, it costs money, but, um, it wasn't nothing elaborate, but it's, it's really neat, it's things for the kids to do, uh, you know, it's something to put in at the park right here behind us, and if, if we can raise the money somehow to pay this thing, there's something to take the kids to, I, I guarantee you, as hot as it's been, them kids will wanna go there every day right now.
But you, you need an influence, I'm talking to you.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I'm a concrete man, I can do what you want.
Okay, but this is, this is what, these are goals we're trying to reach here.
That's what the money's going towards, trying to keep the funds up, so other things can be done, other than just the budget.
If you wanna take a wild, like, Otter Creek back, 'cause I remember, my grandfather was here for all his life.
Yeah.
I'm from Cheekland, but I've been in this area all my life. The strongest, I know this, is I was a kid.
Yeah.
I know what was here, this used to be called the Cooters Slide. That's history.
Okay.
That is history, this should be coming out of the Cooters Slide, I think, because, you know, that's where it was.
Alright, our three minutes is up, okay?
I know.
Thank you for your comment, thank you for your input.
That would be politically incorrect under our circumstances.
Public comments at the end, okay? The, um, um, is anyone, before we adjourn the meeting, is anyone in the council, have anything to say, or want anything out there?
The only thing I'd like to say is, people live around here, your neighbors and all, like, they, they didn't come to it, they don't, you know, tell your neighbors to start coming and participating, you know, it's the best way we can do for our town, find out what the people want, what the people need, is for them to come and talk to us.
Right. We need, we need the people in this town to talk to us, not just three or four that just, you know, want what they want and not what the rest of people want. When I go, when I've gone around and talked door to door to people, I get a lot of input and I hear a lot of things, and it's not the things that's been represented at this table in the past, and, um.
I'm your neighbor, and I haven't spoken with you, and my dog came from your house, got a shot.
Your dogs are.
And that's kind of, I mean, it.
Your dogs are in my house every day, and they're still ours.
Uh, yeah, playing in, in the field, you know, they're not hurting anybody, not to be shocked. I mean, if normally, you can always say, hey, come here, take.
Okay, just, public, okay, Rex, welcome.
Thank you.
And, um, Melissa, you're in. Thank you, guys, you're in. And ta-da! Alright, we have to go.
Alright, gonna pick up the sound system, how about that, a pretty normal meeting, isn't that cool? How awesome is that? Alright, so you guys can linger and watch while I pick up the sound, bless you! Get this up, do it. Alright, appreciate everybody jumping on, we're gonna hang out for a bit, so you guys just watch. I'm the same.
Feeling better.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Now I'm double microphone, can you hear me now, everybody couldn't? Oh, see you later, man. Alright, I'm gonna put this up, and then we'll be going outside. Hope to see you, babe. Appreciate some pressure. Wanna do the relay, I'll bring them to you, and you put them up? Alright, we're almost out there, folks, we're almost done. I know you're still live, people are still watching the aftermath of Otter Creek, the most successful meeting this town has ever had. Okay, so, this is what we're gonna do, I'm gonna go grab you guys, and we're gonna get outside, and then we'll say hello. Alright, put my glasses on. Ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba, put my glasses on, see what's going on? Okay, yep, I got dual speakers right now. Oof, Alba, successful? Alright, we're gonna come out here, a little, uh, man, there we go. Wasn't it? It was, wasn't it? Like, it couldn't get any better. So we'll walk up here, and we'll sign off here in a minute. But, sorry, I didn't read on the cats, man, it's cats, chats, there's, appreciate all the super chats and memberships and stuff, I've seen a lot of stuff coming in, thank you so much, I do appreciate that. As you can see, the town of Otter Creek is definitely moving in the right direction, the, um, the dramas, I mean, it's kind of gone, I mean, there's, you had a little bit of entertainment in there, didn't you? Uh, I'm, I'm sure George is over there, and got stuff going on, she, I'm sure, she's probably, she's over there talking to him, so, yeah, it's just even Dawn, an interview, so you guys have to go watch What the Hells, and find out that interview. But, um, yeah, man, I mean, just Jeremy, man, I appreciate you being on here and hanging out with everybody, and he had some pretty funny remarks, that was, that was definitely entertaining, I, I definitely enjoyed that, that was like, pretty funny. But, uh, yeah, man, I just, I'm just happy, I'm happy that the town's moving in the right direction, and that, uh, everybody's doing good. So, yep, George is over there interviewing Dawn, you, I'm sure you guys will see that. Alright, I lost everybody, I came back, I jumped on, I'm back, anyhow, um, I just want to say, thanks to everybody for watching this awesome meeting, if you guys just want to hang out, like, how many people on here aren't subscribed? Remember, I got two channels, What's Doing Willis and Tube Town. You might get a little moody meditation with Willis. I don't know, you guys are gonna find out on the What the Hills, just wait for it, doo-doo-doo-doo-doo, WTH News, coming soon, as an aftermath interview with Dawn and George. Again, everybody knows, I'm just here to have fun, um, and, yeah, kind of show the, show the town what we got going on, so far we got 32 booths, all three food chucks, there's, again, like I told you all before in my videos, there's, things have to be figured out, you know, these meetings have to be figured out, and then more things to be talked about, so, all that said, I want to say bye to everybody, my phone's probably like burning hot, it's been on for two hours, but, uh, but yeah, man, I, I thank you all for all the support, and I appreciate you, and, uh, well, you guys know, you know what I say, Joy is probably calling me right now, I'm just not calling me, she's like, she, she's calling me, so. Alright, everybody, well, I love you all, I hope it wasn't too boring for you, but you got to see the progress of what a good town council, working together, can accomplish. So, I appreciate you, Jason, for the $5 super chat, once again, thanks for all the, the moderators for helping out, thanks for the, um, the super chats, the memberships, and all that stuff, and, uh, just thanks for the viewership, man, if you don't watch the channel, try and watch it, try to make, I'm changing the world once in a while at a time, so, what channel am I on right now, what day am I on, live? Uh, oh yeah, well, Joy's not here, but it would be, if you guys weren't there, we wouldn't be here, but she's not here, I'm talking for her, so. If you want to stream, okay.